I now call to order the February the 17th, 2015 edition of the Canyon City Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you all please rise and pledge allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all and welcome. Denise, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Chairman Troutman?
Here.
Commissioner Bellantoni?
Present.
Commissioner Walsh?
Here.
Commissioner Grantham?
Here.
Commissioner Cromer?
Here.
Commissioner Embry?
Here.
Commissioner Gill?
Here.
And Commissioner Frida?
Here.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, Councilman, a member, Kevin Dittmore, passed away in January. Kevin represented the City Council on the Planning Commission. He was always very involved in our planning process and always contributed with enthusiasm and a sincere desire to help. He represented the City Council on the Planning Commission with respect and demonstrated a love for his community. We're going to miss Kevin. This evening, I'd like to welcome Councilmember Pat Frida. When I first heard you were going to be on our commission, I was very excited. I've known you for a long time and I've watched you do a lot of hard work and really appreciate your continuous service for our town. And again, welcome to our Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Preston. I just wish it wasn't under these circumstances, but I am glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, has everybody had an opportunity to look over the minutes over our last meeting, which was back in September? Do I ask for approval, additions, corrections?
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. You have a tie here. Do you want to debate that? We're going to give the second to Commissioner Gill. Would you please call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bellantoni?
Aye.
And who did we decide seconded that?
Mr. Gill.
Commissioner Gill?
Aye.
Chairman Troutman?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Grantham?
Yes.
Commissioner Cromer?
Yes.
Commissioner Embry?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Well, this evening, we have two public hearings. The first is the public hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for the zoning amendment 17 for industrial zoning. So we'll open the public hearing for amendment to zoning amendment under conditional use and special review for the I industrial zoning. This is to consider the adoption of the amendments in Title 17 zoning regulations of the city of Canyon City, more particularly to revise permitted conditional and special use in the I industrial zone district, including supplementary regulations and definitions as they relate to these revisions. The provisions of the Canyon, of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of this hearing as set forth verbatim. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, sir. We are considering a zone code amendment for uses in the industrial district, all of them permitted conditional and special review use. And as related to those changes, supplementary regulations and some definitions that we are requesting to have changed. It was requested, oh, let me also say that our public notice was published as required by law. It was requested that the city reconsider its designation of a recycling facility as a use to be reviewed and approved through special review use. Staff considered it appropriate to consider separating this use from a waste management facility as it now appears in our code. In addition, because the zoning code is undergoing comprehensive revisions this year and this portion of the code, those zone district uses, have not been reviewed for some time, staff evaluated all of the uses in the industrial district for their appropriateness and the level of review that's required for approval. And I'm going to go through just the types of changes that we considered. First of all, and this was our primary consideration, was to look at the recycling facility. We suggest that this use be separated from a waste management facility. We have suggested that it be renamed and defined as being one of two types, a type one or a type two facility, based on its impacts. Secondly, we have tried to introduce more comprehensive language with respect to light industry. This includes revisions to the intent of the district itself and defines light industry as a, as an actual use. We've also removed specific uses that can be identified in other more general permitted uses. For instance, we added trade and repair shops, which is an existing and defined use in our code, and removed a specific trade shop, like an upholstery shop. That's one example. We moved some uses to and from other categories of permitting. And we added some uses, as we went through the general commercial district, added some of the uses that were there and put them in also into the industrial district. Having done that, some of our supplementary regulations have also been suggested for some changes. And we have suggested that all uses in the industrial district have certain basic standards that have to do with outdoor lighting, outdoor storage, access to and from the sites, and potential environmental issues be addressed when they are particularly adjacent to residential districts. We have also changed certain definitions. And then there is an attached chart in your staff report that kind of goes through each one of those in detail. I will mention that the Planning Commission reviewed this issue at a previous work session. Your advisory report is also in your staff packet. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to try and answer them for you.
Any questions from the commissioners?
I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
And I hate to bring this up, but backyard chickens. It's allowed in residential. Why is it not allowed in industrial use?
It's, is.
Well, it is. It's a conditional use, so they have to come before the planning and zoning department to ask permission to have a backyard chicken. I'm just wondering why.
That was established some time ago and probably because it isn't common to have residential uses in an industrial district. And truthfully, I was not present during those discussions, commercial, but backyard chickens. And I understand that I'm lucky that I...
Yes.
Nevertheless, a condition, they're required to have a conditional use permit in the, in commercial and industrial. I possibly, and I have a feeling that this is because of, and I can only surmise, that it's because you, you could have a residence that's next to something that is not a residence. Now, in an industrial district, would that necessarily matter? Probably not. I think it probably is more impactive in a commercial district than it would be an industrial district. But that was how it came about. So that was not suggested to change.
What about under the SRUs, the special review use? What about RV parks and rafting takeouts? I know we had talked about it and you said you might look into it a little bit more. I was wondering if you did look into it and why are they special review uses, limiting businesses doing what they can in industrial areas?
Rafting takeout facilities, as I understand, and I think perhaps Preston can speak to this as well, rafting takeout facilities some time ago had some issues. And they, they have a long list of requirements that goes back several years. And those necessarily needed to have reviewed by Planning Commission and council at that time. And again, those were not suggested to be changed at this time. Want to jump in there, Preston?
No, no. Just don't ask me about the chickens, please. I believe the, the takeouts that were discussed were actually mixed in a residential area, but there were some requirements, possibly maybe with the Corps of Engineers that were associated with river flow and rivers, and is also as well as parking equipment and gathering of people. So that's the only thing that I remember. But the takeout that I think at one time years ago that was so controversial was going to be in the heart of a residentially zoned area.
I will, let me look, I was looking at the approval criteria for rafting takeouts and, and it is extensive. They need to have permits with whomever, probably, I think BLM or whoever is...
It's more than likely the Corps of Engineers.
Corps of Engineers, could be, based on river permits. They have to have bathroom facilities. They also have traffic impacts. They may have to have access permits as well, vehicular access permits.
Okay, I guess...
So that necessarily means a higher level of review?
I guess my question would be, why could that not be a conditional use then? Instead of going through so many hoops, going through the planning and zoning board, then to the city council, why can't it just go before the city and make sure those requirements are met?
It could very well be. And we can certainly make that request as we continue to go through our, our review of all of the uses this year. I certainly will make a note of it and...
That'd be my question about RV parks as well. Could that not just be a conditional use?
Well, again, RV parks have very extensive requirements as well. Design requirements and everything that, and at the time that these were all set up, we did not have a conditional use permit.
Now, the difference between conditional use and the SRU be property notifications?
Property notification is done in both.
Oh, okay.
But the, the main difference is that the conditional use permit is a staff level review and the special review use is reviewed by Planning Commission and by council, approval by council. So that's a two-level review beyond staff.
And conditional use permit, if they disagree, they could still determine and bring it to Planning Commission and City Council?
They can appeal if it doesn't go their way.
It's like an appeal. So let's say they go in and staff says, no, we can't do that, or they find that the requirements are not to their liking. If they wished, they could ask to bring it in front of the Planning Commission and City Council, or vice versa.
Which is why I'm asking, why can't those just be moved up? Because if they do have a problem or they don't agree with what the staff consider or like, then they would have to come before Planning and, or Board of Adjustments, I assume?
No.
Not Planning and Zoning?
No, Planning Commission, well, and City Council. You're talking, are you wanting to downgrade that from, to C cup, to conditional use permit from a special review?
Yes.
So it would be done at staff level?
Yes.
I will make a note to you as well that while there is a mailed notice sent out on both of these types of review, there is also, in the case of a special review use, where it goes to you and to City Council, there is also the property is posted and there is a public notice as well. So it goes to the, the general population notice as opposed to just the adjacent property owners.
Yeah.
And it was felt at the time that these two uses needed that level of review.
It would depend on what you feel, what you feel about whether a conditional use permit does not come through a public hearing, the public could have input. The input is mail in or talk to the administrator, something like that, which takeouts and RV parks, because of the numbers of people often it generates in a concentrated area, the thinking at that time, especially with restrooms and some facilities to provide food for people, is a little different concept. It's a density thing.
I think we're, we're trying to be a business-friendly community and we're trying to put more requirements on everybody. I can understand why they were put in place to begin with. I just don't understand why they would still be in place now as we're moving forward, as we're trying to be business-friendly, getting rid of the red tape, and yet we still have red tape up.
So you're right, have a preference to pull those and put them into a special use permit, or none at all by right?
By conditional use, so that the conditions can be met with...
Conditional use.
Yeah.
Okay.
As I said, I will put that on our list. Because these are allowed in other districts, I hesitate to, to make that change in this district without actually considering the use itself in all the districts where it's allowed. But I will put it on our list and we will, we will address it again.
So we don't have to change the amendment as it stands before us tonight?
My suggestion is that we do not.
Okay.
Not at this time, but we may later on as we continue our, our code revisions.
Is that okay? So we're going to bring that back up. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, how, we can open it up to the public. Is there anyone here, the general public, with a number of people sitting out there that would like to comment on this? Would you please stand up and state your name and address and bank account? No, just kidding.
Social Security number. My name is Rob Brown. I'm the Executive Director for Fremont Economic Development Corporation. I live at 301 Green Horn Drive in Canyon City. I want to speak in support of this particular amendment. Initiated this process by letter and asked for some additional definition. And I think, speaking to the point about business-friendly, I commend the city on their aggressive pursuit of that, and this is a continuation of that. I also wanted to say that in recent weeks, I've had very good luck with staff, especially Terry has been very supportive on some projects we're working on, and I think it's a great demonstration by this commission and the city council about making this community more business-friendly and changing the economic picture in a positive direction. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing then. Are there any additional comments or concerns from the commissioners?
I, I'm going to take a moment and I'm going to recuse myself from the vote, if that's okay. I think it's appropriate since the topic, the reason for the initiation of the review was a project that I was working on.
What is the feeling on the commission? Is that acceptable?
Right. Agree.
Okay.
Agree.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Bellantoni. Okay, would anyone like to tackle the portion of the approval or disapproval or the finding of fact to be more factual, finding of fact? Go ahead. Would you please?
Canyon City Planning Commission, upon conducting a public hearing on this amendment, after considering the testimony presented by city staff and other interested parties, finds as follows, that notice of the public hearing was properly given as required by law. Based upon the above findings of fact, the Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendation to the Council of the City of Canyon City. Full of the amendment to the zoning ordinance, but with the following modification, that staff does conduct a review of the points raised by Commissioner Grantham and reports back at a subsequent date.
Second the motion.
Could we just hold it right there? Is that, how do you fit that recommendation into? Does that work? Terry?
That's a good question, and we'll have to ask Mr. Havens. Let's let that stand. I, I would say let's just let that stand for now.
I think it works.
Okay.
Because we're approving the amendment, but subject to further consideration of the points that were raised.
So next it would go to City Council, correct?
Yeah.
So he's approving of the additions that you've made and the changes that you've made, but further review upon the stuff that's already established before you were brought on board, is what he's saying. Is that okay to do?
Hey, let me make sure that I understand. You want us to report back on this prior to its approval?
No.
After?
No, because we can always amend the amendment.
Right, okay.
Based upon anything that you may discover, or we let it stand as it is. But once that review is complete, we act and then it's final.
So that would be before these revisions go to City Council?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. Okay. Okay. I would like to add one other thing. If I can have you back up to the first portion, item number two, that should be in the affirmative, if you would?
That, after testimony, et cetera, that not only was the notice of the public hearing properly given as required by law, but that the proposed amendments are necessary and appropriate.
It has been made and seconded apparently twice. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Walsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Grantham?
Yes.
Chairman Troutman?
Yes.
Commissioner Cromer?
Yes.
Commissioner Embry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Okay, we closed the public hearing. And we're going to open another public hearing to consider the adaptation of amendments to Chapter 16, Appendix A, Subdivision and Development Regulations of the City of Canyon City, more particularly to clarify the purpose and approval criteria for subdivision exemption and other subdivision processes. The provisions of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as is set forth verbatim. Could we have a staff report, please?
Excuse me. This is an amendment to revise Chapters 4.5, 10, 13, and 19 of Title 16, Article 4, the Canyon City Subdivision and Development Regulations with respect to the subdivision exemption process. Public notice was published as required by law. This recommended code revision suggests a more liberal process for the creation of an additional lot where multiple parcels are considered. Excuse me. In 2012, the city adopted the subdivision exemption process. And before that, it had a lot line adjustment process that came on board in about 2007. Last year, we took those two processes and we put them together. And you can create a subdivision exemption that allows you to bypass certain requirements for subdivision if you are changing lot lines, or if you are only creating one lot, one additional lot out of one lot. And what we have found was that if people came in with more than one lot to begin with and only wanted to create one additional lot, we really didn't see that there was a problem with that. But the way the, the regulations are set up currently, they would have to go through a minor subdivision process that would warrant them going to Planning Commission and Council to get their approval. And we are offering to bring this forward, to make this a bit more liberal process in that someone can come with multiple lots, and as long as they're only creating one additional lot, they can still go through the subdivision exemption process, which is a staff level review. They still have to go through any number of requirements, but it is a staff level review and has the potential to be a shorter process. They do create a plat, it gets recorded, all of the, the nuts and bolts are there. One of the things, though, and I've explained this in the staff report, is that we do have a limitation on the number of lots that can be, can go through this process. If we don't have that, we could potentially have something that becomes very, very cumbersome to address at the staff level and could also have some unintended consequences, and we don't want that to happen. We want this to be streamlined, we want it to be easy, we want it to have the potential to be good for people and not cause problems later on. So our process, as it stands right now, is to limit five lots, five owners, you could have that, up to five lots and five owners. Or if you had more than that, you can't have more than two owners of the property. That makes a plat doable, simply much more doable. And that's the restriction, and we would like to keep that for this process. As this expands, we don't want it to, again, be cumbersome. So we ask that you can do multiple lots, creating one additional lot with the same number restrictions that are in subdivision exemption right now. And that basically takes care of it. Although, what we had to do was, we did have to make some other revisions to other sections of the code because we were making these changes. And we found that some of the sections of the subdivision regulations were never revised when subdivision exemption came into existence in 2012. And so we went back and looked at all of those sections of the code and got everything up to date. And if you have any other questions, please let me know. I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
I see a few puzzled looks and furrowed brows and questions. I had a question that I wrote down is, first of all, it's, does this make it easier to make a lot line adjustment? Is it in the same category or?
Basically, what it does is it combines lot line adjustment and creating another lot. Lot line adjustments, by definition, do not create other lots. They just move lot lines around for whatever purpose one finds a need for that. Sometimes one ends up having an encroachment. And in order to, to correct that, you just move the lot line a little bit.
Does this also include boundary line adjustments, lot line vacations?
Lot line vacations, that is a subdivision exemption as well, that already exists within the code.
If you had a larger parcel and wanted to split off an acre for yourself, one acre, say it was a five acre parcel, one acre for yourself and give four to your children, the remaining four acres to your children, that falls under this?
Yes, it does.
If you have an estate with four heirs and a four acre parcel, and they all, each one, it's one acre, would that work?
No. That's a minor subdivision.
Okay.
Let's say, though, let me take that a little bit further and give you another example. Let's say you have two lots, not one lot, you have two lots and you want to create three. That's where this new liberalization would help you.
You kind of expand on his part. What if, you talked about only two owners could split parcels? What if there's four owners with not joint tenancy, but their tenants in common? So each of them have a 25% interest in the property and they want to split it? So each of them have a 25% interest in the property, and they want to split it? No, I'm just making sure, because there are things that happen like this. Cause most deeds, when you get, deeds of conveyance, they do not specify joint tenancy unless people know what they're doing.
Okay, I'm, we're, I'm, no, I, I know. You may only create one additional lot. However that becomes owned, is up to the people involved. I see what you're saying, but we can't, truly, if we, and we have to, we're gonna stick to our regulations allowing only five owners.
That's the way a minor subdivision has always been, though.
And, and if you need something else, if you have more owners than that, even though you may only be creating one lot, you'll have to go into minor subdivision. As of just the complications of it. Make sure that we're doing it correctly.
Can you give an approximation of how it shortens the timeframe from start to finish from going through a minor subdivision? Is that a fair question?
My experience here...
You can tell me it's not fair, it's okay.
In, in my experience here, um, we do our very best to get these, get, um, subdivision exemptions through the process. They do tend to take a long time because of corrections that need to be made to plats. I would say that you would add, and, and no joke, we've had some subdivision exemptions in here for six months, it's taken that long to get through the process, even though it's a staff-level review. I would say, you probably are adding another 60 days or more, if you have to go through planning commission and council, at least.
But this doesn't go through?
That's correct.
That, this change that we will make, or going, thinking, contemplating, makes that shorter, it's done at staff level and that can be done...
Is at the staff level. For most, I would say 90% of what we would be looking at would be able to come through this process and be at staff level.
And it would be easy to follow, they could bring it in, as long as their homework and everywhere the plat was done correctly, it could be done at staff level, they're done. That make a clear muddy of the waters. Okay. Anybody, we'd like to offer this open to the public, if anyone would like to, um, discuss this, or have any comments. Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. And shall we move forward with a motion? Would someone like to tackle that? Mr. Commissioner Gill?
The Canyon City Planning Commission, upon conducting a public hearing on the above-captured attachment, after considering the testimony presented by city staff and other interested parties, finds as follows, uh, the notice of the public hearing was properly given as required by law, the proposed amendment is necessary and appropriate. Therefore, based on these findings, the Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendation to city council, uh, the city of Canyon City. Uh, approval of the amendments, uh, I don't believe we had any exceptions in there, did we? Any corrections or anything to go?
No.
Okay. Uh, approval of the amendments to the subdivision and develop, uh, regulations of the city of Canyon City.
Second, here. Would you please call roll Denise?
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Embry?
Yes.
Chairman Troutman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellantoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Grantham?
Yes.
Commissioner Cromer?
Yes.
Thank you very much, that takes care of the items on the agenda that we have. As chairman, I'd like to bring up number five, which is other. Are there any others that we need to discuss? If not, I have one, if I could take your time, because I, I would promise I'd keep everybody here till nine. I'm just kidding. We've had discussions about, we, we had a very good conversation in our work session, and, and I really appreciate that. It, we didn't always agree, but we had some really good thought, and we've had a work session before that, that I thought was very good as well. We've had several of them. And I got to thinking, as long, as well as other people, that wouldn't that be, would that be acceptable to have that open, the public could see it, that what we were actually discussing at that work session? Would that bother anybody?
Fatheress, it's, the, uh...
You think it's appropriate?
They're open to the public, but they're not televised.
Do you think it would be, and, appropriate to have? I think it would be a good thing to have that televised, if possible, and make it even more open to the public of the thoughts and the questions. And even there, we, we had some great ideas that were thrown out, that maybe there would be 10 or 12 people sitting at home in their living room that would enjoy hearing that and possibly, uh, use those ideas. What do you think, Terry?
Interestingly enough, I believe that there's been some discussion about even, uh, city council, correct me if I'm wrong, city council, um, committee meetings being televised, um, and it certainly is something that we can bring up to the administrator and discuss if...
That has been talked, that's been brought up, uh, several times, and, and I think, by and large, we would like to do it. I believe the issue is just how to do it, with the equipment and whatever you...
We don't have it in the committee room. Those discussions, right now, would have to be in here.
So why couldn't we have, um, like, tonight, we had 30 minutes worth of planning commission items, and then have, allow for 30 minutes of discussion on whatever topic, like we did tonight, and just to have it right here, so that people might be sparked to participate? What a thought. And we might have people in the audience that want to come and dialogue with us, and they'll know that we're talking about downtown Main Street, and how to revitalize that community in that zone district, and know that we haven't reached a decision, we're just talking about it, and then maybe they'll come the next time and chat with us.
Will we need more chairs?
I would hope so. I would hope we have to take that wall out. But I, I think what's important to do this, because tonight, as you had that agenda that we only got, didn't finish one, we need to know that under that discussion, like tonight, we get 30 minutes. You know, we were able to get done with our business, we have 30 minutes to bring up another topic to start discussing, so that it doesn't go into the wee hours of the night since we never agree.
I like people listening to our work sessions, that way they know why we come to the decisions we do.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I agree. Does anybody in the commission have any strenuous objections to that, and...
Transparency is always good, involvement in the community is good. We're here trying to do the best we can do. The more information we have, the better off we are, the more input.
And we still eat?
Yes.
Uh, they didn't know that, did they? We had sandwiches. Go ahead.
Another item, Commissioner Troutman, while we're there, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Is, could we please, to that end of what the other may be for discussion topic, in that we can all, as commissioners, bring potential topics for discussion? Please may we have, as an item on the agenda, agenda, item two, approval of the agenda, in case one of us has a topic that we'd like to discuss, and put it into other, so that we can adjust our agenda if we wish?
Or the planning commission agenda?
Yeah, I would just like to have a, a line item on my agenda that says that I am gonna, we are gonna approve the agenda, or maybe we want to modify an agenda. Boards get to take, we get to have that option, don't we? As I recall, that's Robert's Rules of Order.
I, I understand that, but what would you take tonight's agenda? What, what would you do with that?
Well, we would either, we would approve the agenda as written, or maybe we want to make a modification. Want to add a topic? Instead of just other, we might want to add a topic, or we might want to start a list or something?
That might be entirely possible, um, to put the agenda out there for you early enough that you can get something, um, under other. Because we have a public hearing, you couldn't change anything that's been established...
Oh, I understand that. Oh, I understand that.
But for other, perhaps?
Yes, I'm understanding.
I will certainly get that out there for you early, and if you have anything, what, let me think about that, but I'll give you a deadline, and if you have a topic that needs to go under, onto the agenda, I will put it there.
Again, thank you. Uh, so we're gonna look into allowing our work session, our discussions, to be hopefully televised, and maybe a little better attended.
Let me preface, I mean, in that, by saying, I'll talk to, uh, the city administrator about all of these.
Okay.
We're, we're scheduled, or, or commitment, when we, when we volunteer for this commission is a monthly meeting, and it was a shock to our new member, Councilperson Frida, that our minutes that we approved were from September. So technically, we could have had a public work session here, no extra money, and had that dialogue here, October, and November, and December, and January. And it was, that's what our commitment is, and we could have just set it an hour at seven o'clock.
Yeah, and again, I, I, I really appreciate all of you, uh, with your discussion, and the great ideas that we've discussed, and agreed, disagreed, and agreed again. I really do appreciate that. Again, Councilperson Frida, thank you for accepting this post, and you're probably having second thoughts already, but, uh... This is, uh, almost an unruly bunch, the old theory of herding cats sometimes comes in here, but, uh, they're a good bunch, they really are, so. Anything else? Then we stand adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.